Madam Clerk, I'll call this meeting to order.
Okay, Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have a wonderful presentation today from Culture Works. Michael London and Rita Harden are going to give us the wrap-up of our campaign this year.
A recap. It was a really good campaign this year. This was the first year for us to come out of, like everything else and like everybody else, to come out of the, you know, the couple of years of, you know, restrictions that we've had with pandemic. So you can just start clicking whenever. Rita and I, as well as a core with the committee as it expanded, were concentrating on just a couple of things because we knew something had changed from three years ago. And so we said we want to build a foundation for the coming years for what it means to engage with people live because we're going to have the opportunity to do that. And so this is what the committee came up with. We re-resurrected, thanks to Corina Bowl for the Arts, which Doreen started, which was just a blast. We started doing something that some other campaigns around the country have done, and that's daily drawings. It was a wonderful, wonderful piece. We also had a whole lot of small dine and donates where you go someplace, you eat that day, and you give them the number of the card or with a login or whatever, and they give a portion of the proceeds, a percentage, to Culture Works as a part of a fundraiser. Artists in the workplace, we had two artists this year, we'll show you. And we also did a few meetings with the artists that were working amongst us here in the county, county employees, as well as the art auction, which this is our second year for the art auction for Culture Works. What do you got?
The next one. Our annual bowl for the arts, the Doreen Ragsdale Memorial Annual Bowl, happened on May 21st. It was a very good turnout. Commissioner Dodge and Commissioner Rice started the event in perfect form. And again, we had Pete emcee the event, and he kept the fun and laughter and momentum going throughout the whole event. So everyone had a great time. We raised some much-needed funds for Culture Works, and we, again, we created a foundation going forward. So next year, when we have our annual bowl event, I'm sure we'll have even more individuals participate. So everybody had a blast. We had really good positive feedback on this event.
Rita, I want to officially question that third-place team right there. I want it to be on the record. My team's bowling alley dysfunction stopped functioning, so I don't know what happened.
And I want to support that. It's not the first time he's questioned that.
And only red dead is what he claims.
It was good stuff. It was good fun.
It was a fun time.
We had drawings every single day in the month, every single day, weekends, everything. Every single day, somebody won a prize. The committee that we had working on this, wow. They went out and with pretty short timeframe. I think we'll be in really great shape for next year, but they got at least two to three prizes every single day. And one of the key things was if you join, whenever you join, you would win. If you won on that day, didn't mean you were out for the next day. You couldn't win more than one prize in a day, but you could win on every day. And we had some people who won quite a few days.
Very nice prizes.
Yeah. Hit me there. We had winners. Hit that, Rita. Is it working? Yeah. So here's some that are sitting right amongst us and won more than once. This was a lot of fun, and it did what we were hoping it would do. The only way you get into the daily drawings is to simply become a Passport member with Culture Works. It's that simple. And the only people that got in were Passport members, and it grew the number of Passport members. And it also simplified the work for us. The other thing we were looking at is efficiency. What happens if something contracts? This is something we were able to do, and we had people, we had a couple winners who were in a remote workplace, which isn't the majority by any means, but we did have some, and they were participating. And we had somebody had to come in three times because she won three times, and she was coming in each time to pick up her prize. This, I think, is going to lay a good foundation for next year. I really do.
I want to add a note with the remote winners. We worked with HR, who was very helpful in getting the prizes out to the individuals that weren't in the office workplace. So we really appreciate their efforts, too.
Yeah, they were great.
Next slide. This just shows some of the different vendors that participated in our dine and donate events along with the other fundraisers. We had Casual Days, we had Department Chili Cook-Off, we had Roosters and Mike's Car Wash and Ace's Car Wash Donate Savings Cards, so people could purchase those cards and get a discount whenever they go to Roosters or get the car washed. So that donated quite a bit of money. Along with all the fundraisers, we were able to raise more than $2,400 for Culture Works. So we thought that was pretty amazing. And this, again, was in a short period of time, so that was wonderful.
Yeah. It was good. We, because this is our first time to bring anybody back, we had two artists. We had Boyd Blue and Matt Burge, who created new pieces, both here at the admin building in the lobby and also at the lobby at DeHaines. And it really was a nice connection for people, especially at DeHaines. But we had a lot of people come up and ask us about what's going on right here. Both the public as well as employees who had questioned, which was really important. They donated the works that they did that day, and that went into the auction and also raised money. So that was great.
Yep. It was really wonderful. And then, again, we had our art auction this year, and it included artwork from county employees only. So it was original artwork. And our artwork was on display during the whole month of May at the Dayton Metro Library downtown. We had prime property area at the library. It was near the, which corner of the library?
Right on the corner of Patterson and Third. So right, so we had people coming when we were working, looking through the windows at the art, as well as people coming inside.
Yep. They really liked Tom's artwork. I don't want to put you on the spot, but they did like your artwork.
Yeah, that was fun.
It was fun. And the art auction contributed over $1,200 to the campaign, so we thought that was wonderful.
Yeah, it was.
We had a total of 18 pieces donated, and we had a total of 14 winners. So that was good.
So this is the campaign totals. And so last year, we were around a little over 10, close to 11, and this year, we topped 14, almost 15, 14, 8. So this was significant. This was a 27% increase over last year. And to be really honest with you, and Rita and I talked about this, we said, if we raise more money, fine. If we don't find, we have to lay a foundation for what it means to have an open campaign that can reach out to employees across the different departments, as well as constrict if need be. So we have to do things online, and we have to have things live, and that's what we did. So I think we accomplished both. I think we've got a really good foundation for the next coming years. I think every one of these are going to grow, but we also have something that's designed for the situation that we're all in now. And it still raised the funds, so. And it was a lot of fun this year. We had a great committee.
Yes, we had a wonderful committee. This is the listing of the committee members that we had this year. We had 30 members, which was probably...
Yeah, it's one of the largest committees we have.
One of the largest groups that we had, and it was throughout the various departments and various buildings within the agency. So I think that had a really good impact on our efforts as well. And we also have individuals that have already reached out to us saying, hey, I want to be part of this committee. We're like, okay, we'll invite you for 2023. They're like, great, because, you know, a lot of positive feedback, you know, word spreads. Thank goodness it was good word. That we had so much fun and all the events that we were planning, and they wanted to be part of it. So that kind of made us feel really good.
I think the other thing was that there was, they really put their thinking caps on, and it was, they came up with ideas about who to go to in the community. And the surprise was, I think for me anyhow, was how many vendors that are out in the community, businesses that are in the community that said, oh, can I be a part of it? As soon as they heard, and they were donating things for the daily drawings and other stuff, and have asked since it was over, are you going to do this again next year? Can we be part of it next year? I didn't expect any of that. But the only reason that happened was because of the outreach that Corina and Michael and Brian and the rest of the committee did. They did, it was wonderful. It really was.
Excellent job.
Yeah. So good stuff.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah.
Rita has all the answers.
Rita will.
That's what I always answer. I usually go, I don't know, ask Rita.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
It's so nice to be able to continue to do this. We know that it was a passion of Doreen's.
Absolutely.
And it feels good to be able to continue that on and celebrate her name still.
Yeah.
It's really special.
Yeah.
And I know Culture Works is just thrilled that we do what we do. Thank you, guys.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we could tell your enthusiasm, and I think that projected through. Everybody could sort of feel it and, you know, get excited about everything, so, you know. And I think you didn't mention the pies.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I got one.
Pies were really good.
Oh, God, it was good.
It was. It was one of the fundraisers. What is it called?
Yeah, it was a very good idea.
The Pie Peddler.
The Pie Peddler, right.
And I don't know, I can't remember how much money, but it raised money, too.
Good.
Almost $200.
It was fun. Everything was fun, all different stuff, too. So it was great. Thank you. Thank you both. I know you worked hard, and so did the committee. It was great.
And of course, I will chime in, but I would also say that just one more example of how when we turn to our employees for good causes, they come shining through. We have the best employees anywhere, and so, but it's a reflection of you and your team as well. So thank you to you and the team, but thank you to our employees for really supporting Culture Works, which really makes our community such a vibrant, high-quality place to live. So it's all good. Good, good, good. Thank you.
Michael and Rita, thanks for everything. I know it's hard to do some of this and still maintain your day job. So thank you and thank the team for us. You know, it seems like it was just yesterday we were having the big get-together where we were just kicking off the campaign, and everybody was out, you know, throwing out what they wanted to do, what kind of fundraisers they wanted to do. So please convey our thanks to everyone who's involved, because this is spectacular. And I think it's reflective in the increase, the energy that you and Michael brought to this. I think it's reflective in the continued donation, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. And following that, we turn to our county engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. We have a number of resolutions for you today. The first one is Resolution 22-1201, to amend the agreement with LJB, Inc. for the Airway Road Bridge Replacement Project in the city of Riverside by adding $25,000 to the original amount for a revised total of $372,395. 1202 is to release the 10% cash maintenance bond in the amount of $63,842.44 for the Scannell Properties Shipping Facility plat in Miami Township. And then we have five late items for you today. The first is 22-1231, to rescind Resolution 22-1154, which released 100% of the cash sidewalk bond provided by Divided Ridge Association Limited for Washington Trace Section 7 in the amount of $30,583.25. 1232 is to release 100% of the Bridle Creek Ranch, Section 2, Washington Township in the amount of $21,201.85. 1233 is to amend Resolution 22-1093, which set the dates for the viewing and hearing for the Shoot Mill Road Reconstruction Project in Harrison Township by amending the hearing date to August 23rd of 2022. And then we have two road closing resolutions. 1234 is Johnsville Brookville Road between Brookville Paramount Road and Westbrook Road lasting for approximately two days. And 1235 is Crawford Tom's Run Road between US 35 and Old Dayton Road lasting for approximately two days.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All right. County Sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution 1203, authorizing an agreement with NeoGov for the Power Time Management Suite in an amount not to exceed $34,863.60 through October 6, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. 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 Common Police Court.
Under the Common Police Court, we have Resolution 1204, authorizing a grant application to the State of Ohio Office of Criminal Justice Services for use of funds made available under the American Rescue Plan Act in the amount of $143,515.05.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. County Prosecutor.
Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of Montgomery County Prosecutor Matt Heck, Jr., we have two resolutions. The first is 1205, that authorizes an agreement with Mark Evans, Jeffrey D. Harris, and Arthur Schultes of Bricker &amp; Eckler, LLP, to act as special prosecuting attorneys and providing legal counsel to Montgomery County, including but not limited to the Board of County Commissioners, the Office of Management and Budget through December 31st of 2022. And 1206 renews the agreement of affiliation with Miami Valley Crime Stoppers, Inc. through August the 2nd of 2024.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Juvenile Court.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Commissioners. On behalf of Anthony Capizzi, Administrator Judge, we have one resolution, 22-1207, to accept a continuation agreement with the Alcohol, Drug Addiction and Mental Health Services Board to maintain the Juvenile Treatment Court program in an amount not to exceed $195,369 through June 30th, 2023.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Administrator, we have approved the minutes of the meetings on July 26, 2022. Resolution 1208, approval bills. And Resolution 1209, approval travel and expenses. Both those lists are available at the Clerk's Office.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Administrative Services.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We have several resolutions for your consideration. Beginning with 1210, this is the approval of personnel actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. 1211, authorize an agreement with Sixa to provide veterinary services for the Animal Resource Center in an amount not to exceed $3,240 through July 31st of 2023. Resolution 1212 authorizes a service agreement with Dayton Society of Natural History Doing Businesses Boonshoft Museum of Discovery for educational outreach in support of the Taking Responsibility action at home and at school, also known as the TRASH program, for the Environmental Services Department in an amount not to exceed $30,000 through December 31st of 2025. Resolution 1213 authorizes the purchase from M&amp;J Technologies Direct Incorporated for new laptops, monitors, docking stations, and peripherals for the Office of Emergency Management Regional Dispatch Center Relocation Project in an amount not to exceed $64,072.55. Resolution 1214 approves the planned specifications and estimated cost of $2,500,000 in solicit bids for construction of the Truck Terminal Paving Project. 1215 issues a request for qualifications for professional consulting services for the Solid Waste Management Plan Update. The following two resolutions request proposals for the Human Resources Department, the first of which is 1216 for life and disability insurance plans provider, and 1217 is for employee biometric screenings. The next three resolutions solicit bids. The first is 1218 for Madison Lakes Training Center renovation project at an estimated cost of $318,641. 1219 is for the Jail HVAC replacement project at an estimated cost of $2,014,385. And 1220 is for food products and distribution services for various county departments. And the last two resolutions amend agreements with the Ohio Department of Public Safety Emergency Management Agency by extending the terms through August 31st of 2022. The first is 1221 for the Fiscal Year 18 State Homeland Security Grant Program, and 1222 is for the Fiscal Year 18 Law Enforcement State Homeland Security Grant Program.
Commissioners, before you approve, I'd like to ask Matt to give us a brief description of Resolution 1214. I think you'll find, Commissioners, that this has both an operational impact, but it also has an environmental impact. Yeah. Matt?
Sure. Thanks, Michael. This is the property that's, it's on the southeast quadrant of Cardington and 741. And we, there's approximately about 60 trailers that are parked there. And the current lot is not paved. It's just gravel, dirt. And in the summertime, dry weather, we have issues with air quality because it kicks up the dust. And we've had these issues for a long time, and we generally have to send an employee out to water it down, to keep the dust down. So we're looking to pave it with concrete. We're also going to, there's a little dip on Cardington. If you've been out there, we're going to fix that issue, too. So it's rebuilding two entrances and adding a third entrance for the semis and the trailers.
Great.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. 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 Environmental Services.
Thank you, Commissioners. Environmental Services, we have Resolution 1223, submit an application to participate in the Ohio Water Development Authority Local Government Agency Loan Program for a loan in the amount of $1,797,680 and authorize a cooperative agreement with OWDA for implementation of the Walnut Grove Tank Rehabilitation Project. 1224, authorize a cooperative agreement with the City of Trotwood for the distribution of funding of an Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program Grant and loan for the Mans Water Main Replacement Project. 1225, amend the agreement with Outdoor Enterprise LLC for construction of the Sheldon Water Main Replacement Project by deducting $34,509.52 from the original amount for a revised total of $642,641.19. 1226 is to accept the official check for the 2050 Needmore Road Sanitary Sewer Extension Development in the amount of $14,680. The last one is Resolution 1227, accept the 20% performance bond for the Salday Water Main Extension Development in the amount of $9,154.20.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Business Services.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Business Services, Workforce Development. Resolution 1228, authorize work experience guidance program agreements with various local businesses. 1229 extends the agreement with Area 7 Greater Ohio Workforce Board, Inc. and the GOBE Chief-Elected Officials Consortium for two years to include program years 2022 and 2023. And under Community and Economic Development, 1230 approves the Economic Development Government Equity Edge Agreement with Washington Township for the Ram Precision Industries Project in amount not to exceed $370,000 or 3.7% of the total project cost, whichever is less.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. 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 We have one comment by one of our citizens, Marianne Perry. Would you like to come up to the podium? And give us your address, and you all have three minutes.
In noticing all this, I live in a community that is totally forgotten. Should never be, but it is. Why I say that? We have a VA, we have a Montgomery County Fair. And the noise from it. Problem being is, I hurt my toe one time. I didn't have any place close to go to. I had to call one of my insurances, and they said, go to Kettering something. I forgot where it is. It's on Alex Bell and I forgot. So to make a long story short, there's no urgent care in the area. There's no urgent care. If you're older and do not have any relatives, you're not getting there. There's no place to go. There's nothing in walking distance. It's a bus or a neighbor. If you know anything about the gas problems these days, it's the bus. I was lucky to get a neighbor to take me to Miami Valley Hospital to take care of the problem. Like I said, I grew up in the area. It used to be a self-contained area. Now it's not. We don't have anything. I look at something you said you helped Trotwood with. That's interesting because Trotwood is a city. Jefferson is a township. But yet, we receive nothing from nobody and no help, not even the fairgrounds. But they can make a lot of noise on the two days that they were there. I live not too far from it. Now, everybody is trying to interrupt the people that still live there to buy their homes cheaply. Problem one. Problem two, we do have a bus service. Problem three, when on the weekend you want to go somewhere, you can't. You can't guarantee your way home. What I mean by that, it doesn't, the buses don't, do not go to the hub. If it doesn't go to the hub, you don't have a way home. It's not fun to be stranded. It's not fun to whatever. I also would like to know about the opioid money that most of the counties will be receiving. What will Jefferson get? All these questions are important to the people that live there. When I asked once before, how many men or women in here are vets? And the ones that raised their hands, when you are hurt, we have this big lovely VA you can go to. I have nothing I can go to. Nothing. And it's a shame you can, I'm not knocking all these other places, but it's a shame the older people there have nothing to go to. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. All right. Comments by the County Administrator.
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, this week, Tom Kelly, our Assistant County Administrator, announced that he is retiring from Montgomery County after 30 years of service. But the great thing about this is Tom is going to go on to continue serving our community. And we're very proud of Tom as President and CEO of United Way of Great Dayton Area. And I'd like to say, for the years that I've had a chance to serve either directly or indirectly with Tom in various different roles, it has truly been a pleasure and an honor to serve with you. I do not know who is going to build the Hot Wheels track for you, NCF, now. We'll have to figure that out.
He can come back.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to come back, put the track together.
He's just a couple blocks away.
But I will say also, we look forward to working with you in your new role, and we know you're going to bring a great deal of energy and excitement to the agenda at United Way. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Yeah, thank you, Tom. You know, I have to give you a shout-out real quick about Human Services Levy. I don't know what we would have done without you. All the years I've been active on that Human Services Levy, it comes in front of the public every, what, three or four years? And you've just done a great job. And I'm going to make sure that your name is on top of the volunteer list. Give him a year or so, and then he can co-chair it with you. So anyway, so thank you. Thanks for everything. Yeah, Tom, you know, when I think of Human Services in Montgomery County, I think of you. I remember when I was in the Auditor's Office, and you guys had first opened, what did you call it back then, the office, now that it's HSPD?
Community Human Services.
Yeah. And I remember you being over here and always, you know, whenever there was a question, I'd say, ask Tom, ask Tom. And of course, we'll still be asking you questions, so don't think you're getting away from us. We have you for another month, and we'll continue to celebrate you, and thank you.
Thank you.
And of course, I haven't worked with you as long as others, but I've learned quite a bit since I've been in this role, so I thank you for that. And I just think that individuals like you, who are such, I use this term over and over, but we're surrounded by exemplary public servants that are the ideal of what we all try to be, and you're certainly one of those. And most recently, I found out earlier that you had a whole financial background that I didn't even know about. So I'm sure I don't know half of all that you've accomplished, but I'm pretty darn impressed by all that I know of. And I know that United Way and our community, it will be greatly blessed to have you leading that effort because we rely on them to be successful so that our community is successful. So I'm glad someone of your caliber and integrity and determination will be leading that charge in that endeavor. So I wish you all the best. You'll be missed, but we're glad you're not very far away.
Oh, thank you all. You know, after being somewhere for 30 years, it's going to be different. You know, I've always appreciated and enjoyed my
You know, I've al, I've always appreciated and enjoyed my time with Montgomery County. Montgomery County will always have a special place in my heart, in my life, and the work that I've always done. And, and one of the things I really value about my new role is that we'll all still be connected. Because the work that all of us choose to do in human services is on behalf of the entire community. And so I really value this, the experiences I've had in Montgomery County, the ability to build my career in Montgomery County and really become, um, adept with the knowledge, the experience, the practice, building relationships, gaining expertise, knowing about human services for the last thirty years. And now having the unique ability to transition, take all of that and offer it as a resource, as an asset, now on the private side of the community with United Way. Because I think what it does is it speaks about our entire community in that we form partnerships, we find solutions, we always move forward. And so, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's really a unique time, and it's, it, it gives me the ability to, to both take all those things and look at what happens and shapes on the outside and show how we get things done. And so, you know, I thank you for all the support you've given me all these years, all the guidance, all the, um, freedom, and just the ability to get my job done. The ability to serve the citizens of Montgomery County. And knowing that that will continue in my next role. And I look forward to being a partner with the county as I move forward. That means an awful lot to me. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah. When we heard this, you know, it's like, well, if we have to lose, lose him, at least we're losing him to United Way. So, thank you. I know you're, you're gonna build United Way even stronger, and I really, really appreciate that.
Yes, my hope is to continue the tradition of United Way and evolve United Way into what it needs for the future. And continue to build it as an asset and a resource for the community, for its partners, the donor base, and certainly all those residents, citizens, and groups who need the assistance in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Also, commissioners, uh, we did recognize, uh, Tawana Jones this morning at our morning meeting, uh, and the Economic Development Team and the work that they do. Uh, but we were honored to have, uh, Tawana be the Community Development Partner of the Year. She received that award from the Ohio Conference of, uh, Community Development. And it's essentially their professional of the year. And it recognizes community development professionals who work on a specific project or program and had a major impact on their community. And, and I think Tawana does that really every single day. I mean, they might have picked up on it, but we're just blessed to have her. Uh, Tawana has worked for the county for twenty-five years and serves on a number of boards. Uh, she's been instrumental in the county's Emergency Rental Assistance Program, uh, which we have the top program in the Miami Valley. Uh, she's also worked to address homelessness for years throughout various projects. So congratulations, Tawana. Well deserved. Uh, she would be here, uh, if not, we've got her on a White House Council this afternoon. She's on the, uh, on the meeting about homelessness and rental assistance. So she's on that call. So, thank you, commissioners, uh, for recognizing her this morning.
Sure. Absolutely. I, I have worked, uh, with Tawana, as you know, through land banking, uh, for more than a decade, and she's just awesome. So it's wonderful when others recognize the great employees that we have, so. Uh, other than that, I will say, I, I think a lot of people don't realize that today is primary election day. So, um, this is unusual. So if anybody's watching and you haven't voted yet, please go, because if not, the turnout's gonna be pretty darn low. So, please go out and vote today. I think the polls will close at like seven o'clock. Is it seven o'clock?
Seven thirty.
Check it out on the Board of Elections website to be sure.
I think it's seven thirty.
Seven thirty?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I just wanted to bring that up, because this is, may not happen again on an August second, but it is today. Uh, also, as you know, we're, we're wearing green. It's not for this reason, but we love green initiatives here in Montgomery County. And the Environmental Services is holding another stellar tire buyback, uh, from nine AM to one PM. And we're giving you lots of advance notice, so you can be, uh, gathering up to ten tires. Uh, it'll be on Sunday, September eighteenth, at the Solid Waste District Transfer Station. And as many of you know, that's located at one thousand one on Crete, Encreet? On Crete?
Encreet.
Encreet Lane in Moraine. So just parallel, uh, to the I-75, you can't miss it. And you can get, wait for it, two dollars, uh, per tire for up to ten tires. So, uh, farm implements, semi-truck tires, and other oversized tires are not, not, not accepted. So just regular tires. And you must show proof of residency in Montgomery County. And honestly, the, the real point of it is not about the money, that's a nice little incentive. But the real point of it is the fact that those tires belong in the right place to be disposed of, so that they are not only not an eyesore, but a health risk and all kinds of other things that are detrimental to human health as well as our environment. And so if you see some tires or you have some in your garage, mark your calendar, bring them on down. You'll get two bucks a tire, but what you're really gonna be doing is helping us to, um, save our local community and help people. So, and we always show up for it, and it is amazing
It is amazing.
To see the number of people who have tires and how they load up little cars with so many tires, uh, without them all falling off. So it's an interesting thing to come and observe.
Yeah, last year, Matt and his team took the four of us around, and it was amazing to watch. Wouldn't it be on the floor and see these, and it's like such precision. Because his, his men and women that work there are just, they've got it down. It's like, nope, nope, here, here, here. So it won't take you long, you know, depending on what time of the day you come there. But there's a lot of people with tires in this community. And you have to be a Montgomery County resident to, to do it, yeah.
Well, we have to thank the volunteers.
Oh, absolutely.
Come from.
I think Kathy Peterson's still a volunteer there.
So, you know, we thank them.
I think Tawana's always been.
Tawana's always there, yeah, yeah.
People also help us take a lot of the tires out of the environment, you know, out of the creeks.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely, alleys where they're dumped, and yeah, so it's, it's a good event. September eighteenth, right?
Yes, Sunday, September eighteenth. I'm sure we'll talk about it again before the meeting.
Sure we will.
I'm just guessing.
Well, Carolyn mentioned that we're all in green, and it's because August is Child Support Month. And for the entire month, people who have lost their driver's licenses for non-payment of their child support can get it, get their license back by paying one month of back support rather than the standard three months. And that's a pretty big deal for some people. Uh, it's not debt forgiveness, but it's a chance to reengage and to, to help them restore their driving privileges, which we know are so important, uh, to get to work, to see your children. Um, so, you know, it's really for the sake of the children that we do this, as, as many other counties across the country do. Uh, last year, we had forty-four people, forty-four people take advantage of it. And it's, um, and it resulted in twelve thousand dollars being collected. So, it's a great opportunity. And again, we're recognizing Child Support Month by wearing green. Actually, tomorrow is the day you're supposed to wear green, so don't look. We'll have to wear something different green tomorrow. But, um, you know, it, it's, when you think about the people who, for many reasons, get behind on their child support, especially now. This is a great opportunity for them, because unfortunately, what we see a lot of times is men, particularly women too, you know, they drive without their license, and then guess what? If they get popped, it just builds up. So not only do they have their back child support due, then they've got all these fees for driving without a license, and, and it's so frustrating when it keeps going, and, and, and then you have people in our county jail because they have fees that they owe for their, for driving, because they wanted to keep their job. So it's just one of those things, this is a great opportunity, um, to break the cycle. So anybody out there that knows anybody that's in this situation, please, please, please have them call or stop by the Job Center. Um, number is nine through seven, two, two, five, four, zero, five, eight. And there is also a live chat feature, which is really neat. I've been over there and seen that live chat feature at Child Support, um, at MCSEA.org. That's it for me. Oh, I did want to say, uh, it was in one of the, um, resolutions, the Edge, um, the Edge Grant to Ram. And isn't Ram the one that said they will, uh, they've, they know that they'll be giving things, they're not giving, they'll be supplying Intel? Wasn't that them? I'm pretty sure.
I believe so.
It was. So, you know, Intel is gonna benefit the whole state, the whole Midwest, but that was one of our companies that I think we can point to and say, yep, they're gonna supply Intel. Isn't that right, Chris?
They are one of your customers.
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm, good.
Yeah.
Great, okay. And you know, you talked about wear green. Our building is going to be, the lights are gonna be green for the whole month. In case anybody drives by, you'll see green lights, so. Okay, on another matter, now supposedly there's a video of this. Okay, I'm gonna get started on it. Because we have three field services employees with environmental services. Here we go.
There it is.
Okay. And they competed in, are you ready for this? Hydrant Hysteria last week, which was hosted by the Ohio Section of the American Waterworks Association.
All right.
Does it move, or they're just pictures?
It's a moving picture, Judy.
I'm not doing it.
Come on, boys. Come on, come on, get it in there, Alex. Breathe when you're done, let's go. Get it in there.
There you go. You competed.
There you go.
To build a fire hydrant from their parts to shorten the amount of time, their winning time was.
They win it, Alex. Come on, Alex.
One minute and thirty seconds. Wow, so congratulations.
There you go. I'm on. Let's go. Go, go, pick it up. One minute. One minute. Let's go, Alex. Come on, Brett. Stay with it, Brett. Get it in there, Alex. Come on, Alex. Let's go. Come on, Alex. Stay with it.
Because I really appreciate, um, you talking about this.
No penalties, let's get this.
Watching the video. And I really appreciate Alex for coming today. Brandon and, Brandon, I, I believe is working the election, uh, and I think Brett had a vacation, so, um, they weren't able to be here. But this is just a little piece of what our employees in the Field Service Division do every day, whether it's, you know, ninety-five degrees out, whether it's, there's snow, there's ice, there's rain. They're out there fixing hydrants and water mains, cleaning the sewer, making sure everything's flowing the right way. So I really appreciate, I appreciate Keith for bringing, bringing Alex here and, and, and appreciate his leadership. So, great job, um, really proud of you guys.
Yeah, congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Keith and Alex. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, well, we are at the end of our agenda, agenda. There will be no, um, county commission meeting next, uh, Tuesday, August ninth. But our next meeting will actually take place the following Tuesday, August sixteenth, at one thirty PM. And if I have a motion to adjourn.
To move to second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Oh, I wanted to point out.
We have a viewing after.
We have a viewing, but I also wanted to welcome one of our newest employees, who's standing in the back of the room, talking to your husband.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike King. He just started with our Strategic Initiatives Team. So, Mike, welcome to Montgomery County, and thank you. Thanks for coming to our meeting.
Hello, hello.
All right, all right, bye-bye.
All right, all right. Thank you. All right, and now we have the viewing of the Shute Mill Road Reconstruction Project in Harrison Township.
Look at them all leaving. I see them.
Bailing on us. They just, they bail on us.
That's Joe Durk, come on.
I know, right? Come on! How can you run off the Joe Durk?
The award-winning?
The award-winning. The award-winning Joe Durk.
That's right.
All right. Part of the title.
Joe, you need a theme song.
Yeah. Some walk-up music.
Yeah. Back, yeah, back in, uh, grade school growing up, it used to be GI Joe.
Okay, okay.
There you go.
So Joe is our project manager for the Shute Mill Road Project. He'll be doing the viewing for us.
All right, Joe.
All right. Thank you, commissioners, administrator, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Joseph Durham, the, uh, project manager for the Shute Mill Road Reconstruction Project. This project's located in Harrison Township. Uh, the limits of the project start at the western limit, uh, a few hundred feet west of State Route forty-eight, extends east through the intersection of Riverside Drive all the way to the Stillwater River. Uh, next few slides, we're just gonna walk through the corridor. Um, overall, the project's a little over about three-quarters of a mile in total length. The corridor is, uh, a dense urban-style area. It's four lanes, two lanes in the eastbound direction, two lanes in the westbound direction with concrete medians. Um, you'll notice, uh, various business types, gas stations, uh, some food spots. Predominantly, you have business on the south side, the right side. On the left side of the street, once you get past forty-eight, uh, you'll have single-unit family homes and the Sinclair, Harrison Township Sinclair Park. Notice, you've got, on the left, there's one of the residents up against the street. Uh, one of the things you wanna, wanna notice, there's no pedestrian facilities out here. There are RTA stops though for Horizons Academy. You've got Charity Adams Early School, you've got Girl Scout Academy. So now we, we're coming up to, uh, Sinclair Park on the left, the drive to the right to, uh, Charity Adams and the Girl Scouts. Here's the intersection of Riverside Drive and Shute Mill Roads, the entrance to Sinclair Park on the left. Um, on the left here, you will start seeing a bike path. That's the Stillwater Recreational Trail, which takes you from Sinclair Park all the way downtown. Uh, daycare center on the right. Overall scope of the project is, we're gonna replace deteriorated asphalt-wearing surface and make repairs to the underlying concrete pavement. I'll have photos of all this to kind of show what we're talking about as I move on. But replace the crumbling, crumbling concrete medians, replace the deficient storm sewer, catch basins and storm pipes, replacing the existing traffic signal at Riverside Drive and Shute Mill Road, replace two, uh, restruct, a structurally deficient bridge in Culver, rehabilitate another structurally deficient bridge, and install sidewalk and a shared-use path. So kind of walk through this project. Um, on the discussion of the pavement, photo on the right, you can see map cracking. That's the transverse longitudinal crack in the asphalt is deteriorating. With the photo on the left is trying to highlight, you can kind of see that bump in the pavement. What there, like I said, there's concrete underneath this asphalt. And what that is indicative of is the concrete joints are starting to fail. So we're gonna take all the asphalt off, expose the concrete, replace any deteriorated joints, any other concrete panels, and then put that asphalt-wearing surface back. These were concrete medians at one point in history. Uh, they're gone now. Um, medians shouldn't be repaired with brooms. So we're going to rip all these out and reconstruct them, uh, kind of minimize their size to help it, uh, be a little more forgiving to traffic and snowplows, things like that. Uh, this is a typical condition of the catch basins out there. So these are maintenance nightmares for our crews. We are replacing all of them with more maintenance-friendly style structures. We've also videoed all the storm sewer out there, so any pipe that was found to be breaking down, we're gonna replace that as part of this project as well. Anything that could be salvaged, though, pipe-wise, we're just gonna leave it in place, minimize the overall impact of the project. The existing span wire signal at the intersection of Riverside and Shute Mill that we're looking at, it will be replaced with mast arm-style signal. This signal gets impacted regardless of the project because of the, one of the bridges that's actually. one of the bridges that's actually runs underneath diagonally of this intersection. So, there is a large structure which runs diagonally underneath the intersection of Riverside and Shute Mill. To replace that structure, we wipe out two of the four poles. Based on the agent's signal, we're just upgrading it. So, this is the structurally deficient culvert. It's a six-foot diameter culvert located about two hundred feet west of Riverside Drive. We're gonna put back same size, six-foot diameter culvert. What's going on is the bottom of the culvert is corroded away and the, it's the age is starting to catch up to it. This is the, uh, bridge. It's a large culvert. It's twelve foot wide by seven foot tall, runs diagonally under the intersection of Riverside Drive and Shute Mill. We will replace this structure as part of the project. The replacement of this structure, because of its lay, how it falls underneath the intersection of the Riverside and Shute Mill, we will have to close Riverside Drive for a portion of the project cause to maintain traffic would be cost prohibitive and safety issues because of the way this structure exists, its current alignment. But as you can see, the photo on the right, that is just an indicative photo of the condition of the bottom of the metal pipe. It's starting to scour away. There's holes in it. So this structure's reached the end of its useful life. Now this structure, this one is again, it's a large metal pipe, metal culvert. It's about ten feet wide, about six feet tall. We're gonna rehab this structure. We're gonna pave the invert with reinforced concrete and then do a spray-on liner to this structure. The reason why we're rehabbing this one, this one's located up by the intersection of State Route forty-eight. It actually extends out from underneath State Route forty-eight. So, it physically adjoins an O-dot structure located under State Route forty-eight. This one all, this one has a forty-two inch reinforced concrete water main going over top of it. Also, it's physically right up against the intersection of State Route forty-eight. So, traffic control issues, maintaining traffic while we open cut. The logistical nightmare that would be to maintain that water main without it opening up, causing issues, we went with a trenchless technology to rehab this structure in place. So that's the difference. While we're replacing the other two, the water main goes under those. This one, we are gonna rehab in place. And then, as stated also, we're gonna be adding pedestrian facilities and bike facilities along this corridor. We'll install a sidewalk along the north side of Shute Mill Road from State Route forty-eight all the way to Sinclair Park. And then on the south side of the road, we're gonna do a shared-use path from the intersection of State Route forty-eight all the way to Riverside Drive, tying into that Stillwater Recreational Trail. And that'll also give better accessibility for all the RTA users, people walking to and from the businesses. To do this project, there are twenty-one parcels, twenty-one different owners along this corridor. About thirteen of them will be impacted. So there'll be varying types of, uh, right-of-way that we will need as part of this project. We got about three tenths in warranty deed that we're gonna ask for. About six tenths of standard highway easement extension. Predominantly, that's for the sidewalk and the shared-use path. We need it for to accommodate those facilities. Storm and sanitary sewer easement, about three-hundredths of an acre. And then we're just shy eight tenths for temporary easements. That's to grade and physically reconstruct, tie everything into this new roadway. The overall geometry of the road, the alignment, the vertical, none of that's gonna change. The, the lanes are where they are. They're gonna stay there. We're adding the shared-use path on the sidewalk, doing some drainage improvements due to that grading. And then the structures. That's why we need some of this additional right-of-way. Overall costs, we're just under six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars for design. We're about four-point-three million dollars estimated construction cost. Cost for the right-of-way is gonna be determined by a real estate appraiser who will be coming on later. We have secured a federal grant for construction, about two-point-seven million dollars. And we will be going after additional funds from the Ohio Public Works Commission. Overall schedule, we are wrapping up the design. We're entering into the right-of-way phase. That'll take approximately one year to accomplish. And then, uh, utility relocations are actually gonna be able to start in earnest. A lot of the utilities are in the existing right-of-way and they stay in the existing right-of-way. Some poles need to be relocated. Some things need to be re-boarded. So we'll be able to get some of that moving on right now. And then ultimately, construction will start approximately March of twenty twenty-four and take about a year to complete. And as I said, because of the geometry of that structure under the intersection of Riverside Drive and Shute Mill, Riverside's gonna be closed for about five months. The detour is gonna be from Riverside. You'll take Forest Park over the main street, State Route forty-eight. It's all signalized intersections. And it's just for when, uh, it, it's for half of the construction, really. It's when we're replacing the southern half of that structure that we have to close Riverside Drive. So what happens is when we replace the southern half, all the traffic's gonna be on the north side. And then when we flip traffic, put traffic on the south side, replace the north side, we'll open everything back up.
Joe, will there be a time where both lanes of Shute Mill will be closed? Cause I know you're probably gonna do lane to lane.
Traffic will be maintained on Shute Mill Road at all times. We will maintain one lane in each direction throughout this project.
Okay, so even at the same time when the bridge is, when you're working on the bridge underneath on Riverside, you'll still have some traffic flow?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know.
You'll see concrete parapet walls go up to make sure people are safe when we have that large open trench through the intersection. But we will maintain one lane in each direction on Shute. And with that, any additional questions?
Okay, is, is this Dayton and Harrison Township or all Harrison Township?
It's a hundred percent, the project is a hundred percent within Harrison Township. The corp limit is the bridge. Yeah.
Have you presented all this to Harrison Township trustees?
Not directly, but we have been in contact with Merrill Cypher's, their public works. Kristin Clinchick is, is, knows about this project. We've notified them because they are a property owner in that they own, they're the owners of Sinclair Park.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm sure they'll be thrilled because it looks so bad. That median has been crumbling for probably ten years or more. I don't know.
Yeah.
And you know, and, and you saw in the pictures though, what the devastation from the tornadoes. But by the time you're done with everything, those houses on the hill or those condos on the hill will be gone. Those ugly ones on Shute will be gone. And it should be nicer looking.
Yes.
And Sinclair Park, you know, they really started planting a lot of trees to retreat, so.
Yeah, we're trying to, I mean, we can only go so fast cause of the federal process, but in contact with them. Trying to make sure, talking with Harrison Township, like, don't, they had that very nice sign at the intersection of Riverside, which got squashed by the tornado. So, don't put it up yet. We need to do our project first.
I saw they put up a temporary.
Correct.
Well, it, it'll be great. So, good, good, good. Thank you.
Well, Joe, this works good with everything we're trying to do with the new lift station, which I know you probably already know. Plus we, you know, some of the apartments from the tornado that we're working with.
Yeah.
So this, this is, as Debbie mentioned, this is really a nice cleanup. Is there a, is there a broader strategy in the future to go up Turner? Cause you've got some of the same median components up Turner Road? Or is it, you know, where you got deterioration of some of the, is that like a future strategy or are you just gonna stop at forty-eight?
It's not, it's not part of this project. Well, funding is always the issue. So we've got there's several of these types of roads around the county. We're looking at trying to get funded.
Great job. Great job. I think this is gonna be fantastic. Especially with the bike, with some of the bike amenities. That's gonna be really nice.
Okay, so you have talked to the auto dealership there on that counter?
Not yet. Now that
I can't imagine this is gonna be, he's gonna be a happy camper.
Well, we, we maintained to ensure that there's flow of traffic to and from the school and the auto dealership. We ensured that Sue Ann Boulevard would not be closed during construction. We knew that that would be, his only access is off Sue Ann. We knew that would obviously be an item of discussion. So, we just forced the fact that it'll have to be open. It'll kinda function less as an intersection, more like a driveway when they have to reconstruct based on how some of those medians are in that intersection. But the intent is to keep it open during construction.
That's great. Well, and I'm thinking the school too, Horizon, that's gonna be
Yes. Yes.
They, they also have that side street as well.
Yeah, they can come off Forest Park, but obviously, you know, for the businesses, delivering trucks, you know, they're, they're gonna wanna still come for the Shute Mill. There wasn't a constructibility issue with keeping that open like there was down at Riverside and Shute Mill. So, we were able to keep that opening.
Great, okay. Good. That's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.